I guess we're probably ready to go to the Saldo revision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have some other stuff here, but with your last motion, we'll just forget about that for a second.
This is what you emailed or what Garcia emailed us?
Yes.
Okay.
So what you have here, oh, so there's two things, two things that I did, I guess you sent both what I emailed to...
I sent them and I sent both.
Okay. So I sent you two things. One was definition section for the Saldo. Another was one that kind of looks like that. And this is, that's why I said I'm gonna hold off on that because this is zoning stuff. This was the first going through and just putting the sections in there. It was mostly for my own benefit, but I wanted to share with you guys. Of the sections in the zoning ordinance that need to be already revised based on changes to the Saldo. So some of that stuff that's gonna, but I probably have to sit down and discuss. But this was the start of that. So regardless of what else we come up with from what you just motioned, this stuff here is going to be, needs to be revised to make it to be consistent with the new subdivision ordinance. So, but we can set that stuff aside for the time being. What you have, what else you have in front of you is paperwork. Is definition section of the zoning of the Saldo. It's the last complete section to go through. Scott and I sat down last week to go through it. There's one thing that came up at the end of the week after we met that we have to go, we have to go through the Saldo and it relates to terminology like sewer and sewage terminology and definitions and making sure, because there's what? A dozen, at least, different ways those terms are referred to throughout the text. And we need to get that consistent, consistently used across there. So that's something else that's not included in here, but that's just adding, replacing definitions once they're in, once they're in there. So I have my own notes here if we're trying to combine things from my comments and Scott's comments. The first one there on page two, I have the definition term condominium highlighted. This, the term that's used, you have a different definition in your zoning ordinance. The terminology that I have here was one that we, by a municipality that we redid the subdivision ordinance and they put in some very extensive standard, like we talked about the HOA requirements. They put in much stricter rules on HOAs because they have more residential development than you guys do and needed to have some controls there. So we had researched condominiums and the state laws for it. And this was the definition that became, that came out of that research. So we're recommending using this definition, which is why it's open on the other list of, for changes to be addressed in zoning ordinance.
Do we have a definition now?
In your current zoning ordinance, yes. Yes, you do.
Okay. So this would replace that in totality?
That's what our recommendation is. And just because a lot, some of it's in here is we're trying to be consistent between ordinance where we can. Sometimes we're recommending replacing what's in the zoning ordinance. Other times we're recommending using what's in the zoning ordinance over here. The second one there is definition of term density. And this is one where we need some feedback from you. Your current definition says, there's, the definition process says number of dwellings per acre of land exclusive of public rights or white streets. So basically, the stuff that can't be built on.
Right.
Your current definition doesn't have that last part. It just says dwelling units per acre of land. So that's a bit of a policy change there in this definition. Might want to be considered taking over the zoning ordinance.
It's not in math and you're taking, say you have 10 acres, you might have an acre of streets. You take that out, so then you're down to nine acres, maybe you're working with the density one.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, so it's, sometimes you'll have, you know, similarly on lot size, sometimes you'll have what has to exclude floodplains and all this sort of stuff too.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we've seen both. You know, it doesn't seem quite right to give density based on stuff can't be built on in the first place. But, so that's, we'd be looking for your thoughts on that part there.
I'm thinking, what it does is if you include, if you're including all those non-built areas and you're actually around, you think it's, you know, when you divide it out and get the density, you're actually able to put more units on it.
Yeah. Changes in the denominator.
Keep it usable.
Yeah.
This is more realistic.
It's definitely more realistic. I don't, what's, I would have thought there was a convention on this as opposed to opinions. There isn't.
Not really. I mean, certainly on lot size, it's more common to exclude certain, certain things.
Yeah.
Less so, less so in density, but doesn't mean can't.
Okay. I prefer you Ted, this makes sense to me, but...
No, I could find a good answer.
See here, the, we added the term design professional. Definition here came from Scott. There, so we referenced that in the subdivision ordinance in the new Saldo. I've highlighted developer because the definition that's on page three is the definition that's directly from the planning code. There's, you have a definition in your zoning ordinance, I don't have the zoning ordinance in front of me. Try remember which one, just the one that had the years in it or something like that.
So...
There's, your subdivision, your zoning ordinance definition has some additions to it.
Some extra conditions?
Yeah.
Okay. But this, this one is the same as a what? A plan code?
Yeah, this is, this one is directly out of the state plan code.
Well, I'll probably write it in the plans, though.
It's, it's not drastically different. Like it says, any landowner, agent of landowner, tenant with permission. Yours talks about personal association, partnership, corporation, or their authorized agents, which is the same, it's the same thing, just different. But it goes, it goes along to talk about more subdivision land of all plans are being, or have been made, or proposed to construct or begins construction of a road. So there's, I haven't seen that before. I was wondering where did it come from? Was that perhaps the model of zoning ordinance that was used, that was used to create? I don't know.
I'm thinking, right, a developer, yes, when you talk about a developer, somebody takes, takes a piece of land and he has to prove he has title of that land to be able to present it for subdivision.
Or equitable.
Or equitable ownership.
Yeah.
Now, is there any way to tighten up? I don't necessarily care for the tenant of the permission of the landowner. I mean, I like owner or equitable owner. I like a tighter definition of developer.
Not someone that just rents there. Not someone that's just a renter.
Right. Because I'm thinking back over, I'm thinking back over the time. I can remember having somebody bring, not in here, but somebody presenting, trying to present plans that they own the properties. It's not, you want to be sure that it's full ownership or legally authorized equitable ownership.
We say they have the permission of the owner. Don't they have equitable, don't they have the authorization or they become an agent?
I would, generally speaking, we prefer the planning code, but planning code has also been updated in quite some time. And now there's a lot more, it's more common now where they'll have a condition, condition of sale there or something like that that pursues it. I, what I could do is expand this definition to include some of those other things in there. But I don't know where that road or construction of a road.
The road thing doesn't make sense. And I take your point, a tenant doesn't make sense. I don't know why it would be in the planning code. But a tenant with permission has just become an agent.
Right.
But we say agent.
Yeah. Don't, why, the planning code says what it says. As we joke in the office, the last people that should be allowed to write up legislation are legislators. So I'll correct.
No.
I'll work, I'll work on that.
They're just gonna make sure dealing with the person has the full authority to do what they have.
Next, it's not highlighted in the copy I gave you, but dwelling on page three and then all the way down to dwelling unit on page four. That, those two definitions and everything under dwelling are copied and mirrored directly from your current zoning ordinance. So the definitions are pretty, are pretty good.
I think we updated those, Scott, just a couple of years ago, so they should be pretty good.
Yeah. So that's just, that's a note here, that example of where we've copied things over to be consistent. Page five, fill and fill, clean fill. Those definitions have been added, definitions came from Scott. I think they're pretty, it's pretty thorough.
Those, the Pennsylvania definitions.
Yeah, for best part. And it references DEP's policy too.
Okay.
So both fill and fill clean have been added.
Same page next to floodplain and floodway. Those have been, now mirror the definitions from the stormwater ordinance. So there's consistency between those two. And I would imagine if we, if we were cracking open some of the zoning ordinance, some of that stuff might go, might, definitely might be carried through over there as well.
Okay.
It's good to have a consistency between all the, across the board and all the, instead of one saying one thing, another saying another thing, trying to figure out which one.
It is a lot of times in this source that terms get used interchangeably when they're not interchangeable.
Right.
Interchangeable. Like setback, like setback versus yard.
Yeah.
Two entirely different things.
Right.
But you refer to it, somebody, they'll immediately picture the same thing. How far back, how far close to the road can I get once, but it's not quite. Let's see. Lakes and ponds, that definition, we had the last sentence added, that it does not apply to stormwater BNP is designed to retain water beyond a storm event. That clearly this is just, this is, it's not, doesn't include, this definition doesn't include stormwater stuff. That's separate.
Okay.
Land development, that's, that's been highlighted. And, yeah, Scott, you know? This is not what's highlighted because of a consistency issue. Your definitions in the state, in the state planning code. So for the most part, you know, the planning code is very, very specific when it comes to these definitions. Yours, so it would be A3 here, which you see there's no, there's no three there. You have, well, one and two on the top of page six, those are, those are in, in your ordinance.
Okay.
Your ordinance on the definition, land development, has a third section that talks about improvements that would affect the character, but are not limited to changes that would affect storm management, grading, landscaping, parking, impervious, coverage, water consumption, sewer, well, protection, traffic generation, et cetera. It's extra, but we spent a lot of time in the, in article four describing what triggered a land development, certain land development plans. So it's kind of, it's superfluous, it's not really needed. So we were recommending using this definition, then we updating that one to include, to mirror that. Yeah, that was, that was the main, the main difference we were recommending.
Okay, I remember that long discussion. So I guess as long as that's consistent and whatever we have in three is covered appropriately, then, Omicron, we need a big, long definition that already says what we say somewhere else.
I think that we spent a lot of time on those, that, those breakdowns.
Yes, we did.
To make sure we were, what you wanted to be a land development plan was triggered based on those criteria.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Next, it was land owner. The, your, your, zoning ordinance has, has one that talks about leasing having a remaining term of not less than 40 years. Where other person on proprietary interest in the land shall be deemed a landowner for purpose of this chapter. That's not something that we usually see.
Where, where is that?
In your zoning ordinance.
In our zoning ordinance? Can you read me that again?
Illegal or beneficial owner or owners of land, including the holder of any option or contract to purchase, whether or not such an option or contract is subject to any condition, to leasing having a remaining term of not less than 40 years or other person having proprietary interest in land. Most of that's okay. We're wondering where the heck did that year thing come from? Because we're not, we don't typically see year, like timeframe that.
That's actually common under UK law. When they're on flat ownerships, have those terms. I've never seen one in the United, Hawaii hasn't. Other than that, I haven't seen them in the United States. So I don't see any reason.
For the most part, the definition that we, that's the version I gave you is, is the same. It just stripped that clause.
Yeah. It doesn't make sense.
Well, I've come across things that said that lease was good for 100 years. Usually related to church properties.
Yeah.
Urban areas. Lease the land for 100 years.
Yeah.
Building.
You used to be able to lease state land for 100 years.
Yeah.
They reneged on the 100 years.
But we've covered that point.
But it definitely includes, includes.
Yeah, exactly. We've covered that point. Putting a term on it doesn't make any sense. Okay. Good catch.
Next on page seven. Lot area gross and lot area net. And you see here, there's or here. So there's two, there's two definitions in there for both of these. And we need some feedback from you on which version do you prefer. Part of the thinking here was, I think, Scott, we were looking at the second one in each is what we, is what Scott and I discussed. Especially on gross because that specifically talks return about area being determined from an actual survey rather than deed description.
Right.
I'll give you an example. There's a, there's a major ag operation in the county. Probably one of the most prominent that comes to mind when you think of ag, ag industries in the county, that recently bought some property from another very significant company in the county and had to hire their own surveyor to go out and survey the property they bought from a publicly traded company that did not close. Went, they went through the deed, all the deed works and transfers. Then we come, we come in with our process for preservation and we've discovered it doesn't close. It's nowhere close to closing.
Okay.
You know, so it's not exclusive to just small, small properties now. Knowing where those properties came from, it probably never closed in the first place dating back to...
Well, William, if you got a deed, it probably wasn't there.
That's, I think, we were recommending the second definition in each. So for lot area gross, starts all land area within, was defined by the deed.
So you're saying take out or?
Yeah, we're, I would put them in, in there so you could see. We're just saying, take out everything above the or.
Yeah, I got you. Above both either or.
Yeah.
Because we want everything determined by the survey. Correct?
Right. And then the lot area gross is basically everything defined by the survey. Lot area net is the gross minus rights, all rights away is easements, covenants, floodplains, et cetera. Which is fairly common, exclusions like that are fairly common in calculated net lot area. So that was our recommendation. But we wanted to show you both in case there was first discussion differences.
So the second or, I got you on gross, that makes sense. The net, you're saying the second?
Yeah.
Let's get different, say, a few things included in the second that aren't in the first, right?
The, basically what we'd be recommending is...
Yeah. But I'm asking the why on the second cross out there. The, I get the why on the first cross out.
It's to tie it to the gross lot area.
Yeah. It's the remainder of the gross.
Thank you, got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay, all right. Good.
Next up on bottom of that page, lot lines. The, Scott added the definition there about lines and curve down in the lots described by bearing a distance. I added seafloor along top of property, which is further down. Again, different, people using the same terminology that's, different terminology that means the same thing. The definitions of lot line front, lot line rear, and lot line side are mirrored from the same ones in the zoning ordinance. Oh, and property line is at the top, the third from the top on page seven. Again, we're trying to make sure that if there's terminology that means the same thing, but use difference, that it's cross-reference so people understand. Next on page eight. The mobile home park. Mobile home, mobile home lot, mobile home park, mobile home park permit. You recall previous discussions, we are pulling the specific mobile home park section out of the subdivision ordinance because...
Out of the zoning ordinance.
Out of the zone.
Yeah.
We're pulling it out of the zoning ordinance, the design standards.
Yeah, well, I said two things. We're, yes, we're pulling, we're pulling the zoning, there's zoning requirements in the current Saldo for sub, for mobile home parks. We're pulling, we pulled that out. There's design standards in the zoning ordinance, that's going to be pulled out. The remaining design standards in Saldo are now ones that apply to all housing, not just mobile homes. So mobile home specific stuff is now gone in favor of what's consistent with all the rest. So definitions need to go. So we're saying these are probably, probably coming out. Discussion point there is something to think about in mobile home park, and that's the part that's in red, is what do you, what threshold do you define as a mobile home park? How many, how many mobile homes becomes a mobile home park? And maybe that's more of a zoning question than it is a subdivision question moving forward. But since we have them here, here in the ordinance at the moment, would get you to think about that and see if you have any sort of feedback.
Well, I think it is more of a zoning code question, but your point's right.
I mean, in my mind, it very much falls under the you know it when you see it type of thing. But that does, that's not, that's not, that doesn't work.
I see it. Yeah.
And honestly, mobile home park stuff has been, has been traditionally stuffed into the subdivision ordinance for pretty much inertia for decades. So that it has, there's not really much in the way of guidance to go on. But recognize, I'm also gonna bring out, because we recognize there's a history of mobile home parks proposals in township
Yes.
to, to, to consider as well.
I'll bring this up, I was just looking, I have zoning ordinance definition here. It says mobile home park is a parcel, taking its part. Parcels are land under a single ownership, which has been planned and approved for placement of a mobile home. So a single mobile home doesn't cost it to a mobile home park.
Sounds like it does there.
But I've read other places where they say you have to have sewer and water and other connections that are available to whoever rents the spot.
Yeah.
And it's a very simple level, these four definitions are coming out of the subdivision ordinance because the mobile homes aren't referenced, aren't covered in there anymore.
The new look is going to be, the new look is going to be that mobile home is just a part of the, you know, planned according to the ordinances.
Design standards.
It's not, it's not going to be a specific thing. You're gonna have to abide by the ordinance of the zone that you're in.
But we're gonna have to make this call. One, two, three.
Well, I guess, I guess the infrastructure design for mobile homes is going to have to follow the same that everything else does, otherwise.
Yeah, I got you.
Same building standards.
Same here, yes. Now, now, some of the, some of the zoning related stuff, that's going to imply differently, but we, we're not there yet, so. But this is, again, it's not as necessarily subdivision thing. So this is more, it's something you guys, you don't have to make decisions tonight, but you need to think about, think about that because clearly that, current definition there is not going to work.
No.
Now, was that, could that have been, been a reaction to the, that proposal? I, potentially.
Probably was, yeah.
But what, we need.
Long time ago.
Yeah, yeah. You put a mobile home there, it's a mobile home park.
Anyway, something, something to think about.
Okay.
Page nine, as built plan, that definition's been added, but definition, Scott provided the definition there.
What's it say?
It's called, it's plan comma as built on page.
Oh, okay.
I don't have it highlighted, but we also expanded that open space there so that there's three, like there's common open space, there's active open space and passive open space and what, what those different features mean. If by some chance somebody proposes something specific and gets to the question of, does the attachment be involved? Well, then now you have some definitions to talk about what you say, well, we want passive, you know, undeveloped, we want developed. That's where certainly that gives you some, some teeth to point to, some definitions to Page 10, this will probably come back, come back to, back to you after Scott and I have had a chance to flesh this out more. Sewer, public sewer, private sewer, there, there's a good dozen plus different ways sewer and sewage are used and referred to in the, in the draft SADO. That needs to be, that needs to be cleaned up and then the definitions need to be written, written accordingly. I know Scott, we, we, we have some good definitions to work from, except of work through the language and being consistent throughout the ordinance to get this. So we'll, that'll come back to you again.
I think technically sewer is, conveys sewage, which sewage is.
Right. The people often talk about their sewer system back in the backyard.
Yeah, that's not.
That's not. It's a sewage treatment system. It's not a sewer system.
The only sewer they have is a piping that goes down.
Right.
Sewer, you're probably piping it out to someplace else.
Right. Yeah. Or, or it could be stormwater.
It could be.
Stormwater pipes or sewers.
Storm sewer pipes.
Storm sewer handle.
Yeah, a good example, good example of why it's, why language and terminology is important because, you know, people say, we know what they mean, but they're not using the term correctly. Let's see. Page 11, F under street for private street was added there, I think Scott came up with the definition. Also on that page, study areas highlighted, highlighted in yellow. This has been rewritten, as we rewrote this, the, using traffic study section, we spent some time fleshing out what triggers it and that sort of thing. This is, quite frankly, when most traffic studies are triggered now, especially if it's on state road, there's an initial meeting with Penn Dye and they go through and talk about what that scope in the study area is, which is why we've referenced Penn Dye. Otherwise, it could be the supervisors, it could be the, you know, the engineer, the planning commission, some combination.
They're in the code.
Yeah, well, if it's, if it's on township road, for example, there and it triggers it, then.
The original definition referenced within half a mile. So what if an intersection is 0.6 miles away and such, that's all we're going. Make it a little more inclusive.
Good. Very good.
On the last, on the last, page 12, water course definition, definition added that came, and that definition was provided by Scott. That come out, I think that might've come out of the stormwater ordinance as well. So that's, that's all I had myself to cover here in changes, changes that we made. I don't know if there's any other definitions in there that you saw and maybe wanted to discuss or.
Excuse me, back to that water course, I know it was definitely kind of sometimes questions about water course definitions at the state level, what they, what, I don't know from experience, but sometime, you know, if it's intermittent.
Well, that's why we're not getting as specific as the PA code defines intermittent stream versus what have you, or pollute stream wetland versus another type of wetland. This is just sort of general, general definition that suits the purpose of the ordinance.
Something we would know as a water course.
Right.
I know, it's like you're saying, it's, might have waters once a year or something like that and the rest of the year it's dry.
Right.
But you have to state to take and grab that as a.
Well, the state has all kinds of.
Well, they got a lot of, all their definitions on that.
Yeah.
We don't want to get into that.
And.
UNTs.
I mean, the way it's written does not include the ditch along the side of the road. Because ditch doesn't have front, back and back, so.
I suspect some of these regulations and definitions are going to be under fire with the current administration. There's changes and stuff coming, so every time that, that changes get a whole different mandate coming down from the core.
That's a good point.
They, they look at it differently than, so.
All the more reason to keep ours general.
Loose.
Yeah. And standard vernacular.
Yeah.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so that's the last comments that I wanted to think of, so I want to bring up if there's anything you had, something you wanted to bring up or I can, next step, you know, there's, there's obviously sewage, sewer, sewage that Scott and I have to, have to finish.
Right.
But this is the last section of, major section of the plan, so next step that I was planning was to finish that, make these edits. It's going to require revision to the whole text and that sort of thing. So that's why we sit down a little bit of time and go through all that and then get back to the.
Final.
Final.
You got a question.
There that you guys can then recommend there now. There's, when, I don't know what your process is when you get your attorney involved in looking at things. Do you have them look through, through the ordinance before you adopt? That's not my call, that's your, that's your call. And what process you guys want to use to go, go through. There's clearly, there's some zoning stuff that needs to be done as well here, so. The next thing you'll see from me is the full document. I don't know exactly when that's going to happen, it'll be February or March, that's going to have to figure that out.
Okay.
So, but that's sort of where it stands now.
Once you have the draft out and we should look at it and then probably also submit a copy to have solicited. I guess, we agree?
I agree, yeah.
Because he, he needs a draft to look at.
Yeah.
He may have to go through with it.
Yeah.
We don't want to move forward with it until.
Has he seen any of this?
He has not, and I typically don't do that without, without asking, asking first because it's not our, unless, unless the township has them there at the, at the meeting.
Yeah.
Already, there, which I know some do.
Yeah.
In that case, then I'm, I'm more comfortable doing that, but otherwise I, that's, that's not my call to incur those expenses for you.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think he needs to take his time to, to go through.
Well, you have the final.
I get it. I have a final draft for him to look at.
And we've, we've worked with Todd and other municipalities before, so it's not.
Yeah.
Like he hasn't seen our work before. And I had other stuff here, but if you're going to do the zoning stuff, that's.
We can combine all that together. Yep, perfect. Thank you, again.
Is there any else you?
I, I have one issue. Gus, in the, one of the things that we've discussed as a group is the work that JBI's doing over there, and they're doing it without a land development plan submitted and approved. They're, they're doing a lot. I looked at it again this week.
Passed it today.
And, and, and that's a concerning situation, I think, for us. We talked about it at the last meeting, you're going to have JBI's engineer here talk to us this time around. Did they refuse or what happened?
No.
No to what?
They're kind of tied up right now, but I will get them here.
Okay, because I'm, I'm still concerned, we're going down a path, they're going down a path without the land development, that was a reason, but with the amount of work going on over there, I'll go back to what I said at the last meeting. If they are doing things that have to be undone or changed, that's when the fur flies in this situation and, and I think that can be mitigated, probably can't be totally avoided given what they're doing, but it can be mitigated if they give us some status reports. And I would think, I don't want to speak for supervisors, I would think that's, you wouldn't want us to be looking at that. So we need them at the meeting. And we said that last meeting and they're not here, so. So what would you put in the meeting?
Remember, this all came about because the conservation district and DEP granted them that permit.
I know, I know why it came about.
Despite our objections.
I know.
Have you, have you been out lately?
I was out there four weeks ago.
Four weeks ago, okay. There's a lot happened in the last four.
I couldn't agree more, yeah.
I mean, I happened to go up 15 today to adopt your appointment at Gettysburg, and I made it a point, you know, leaves on the trees. Now, from old 15, you don't see a lot.
They have to pull in to see.
Yeah, but from new 15, boy, I mean, tell you what, they are just doing tremendous amount of excavating.
Are they bringing, they're bringing fill in or?
Oh, they've been filling up and, and I see what they're doing, but I don't know.
How high did you say that has to be, Scott, for the pad?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet.
So you're going to see 50 feet out of 15, you're actually going to see 50 feet of all these, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
It's going to be a big, big.
Yeah. It's going to be, it's going to be a big sled running.
Well, yeah.
It's going to be a big what? I'm sorry?
Sled running hill. You'll go quick.
There's a lot going on without a land development plan, and I guess I would offer that when we ask them to be at a meeting, the fact that they're busy is not a reason not to show up at a.
Yeah.
They're going to have to do all in compaction tests, are they do all in now that they're doing this?
They better be.
You know.
It's their building.
Because it's 50 feet, are they doing the compaction tests now?
It's not township requirement, it's, it's on them to make sure that their building is constructed properly.
After it's up, it starts settling.
It's not our fault.
I'm not worried about compaction testing, but all the things that we, that would be in a land development plan, that's what I'm worrying about.
Well, now, can, can you go out without, I mean?
Yeah, I just have to knock on the door and tell them.
That, that's my question, I assumed that you could as being an engineer.
That's what I did a month ago.
Okay.
Knock on the door, hey, no walking around, okay. They didn't care.
Pay them a visit someday.
Sure. Next time I, I go up to the.
Okay.
Okay, that was my only other.
Is anybody, anybody else have a, public comment? Paul? I already do. Any public comment? Next meeting is February 24th. Not hearing any other. Anything else, entertaining motion to run.
I'm not the motion.
Motion made, the rocks are second. Jeff, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.